Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the Select Board, respective town staff, those watching at home, those in the room. Welcome to the August 5, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board meeting. I'd like to begin this evening by introducing the board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartrand. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
To my left, our Clerk, Selectwoman Billy Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening. And my name is Nico Papakosinides. We'll begin this evening with public comment. It's an opportunity for those in the public that wish to comment to do so. If your comment is related to an agenda item, we do ask that you wait for that to come up. But with that, I believe you're here for public comment?
I am.
You just state your name and address, Mr. Gruder?
Yep. John Gruder, 3 Sterling Hill Lane. And it's been a little over two years since I first started my campaign to get the water rates changed. But I'm back, and I know that I'm just curious, and now I'm actually Russ here, but I've tried to contact Eastman around, but where do we stand with the latest Underwood? Aren't they doing another?
Yes, Underwood was looking at the water rates, and I would have to check with the Public Works Director to get the latest status.
Okay.
We can do that.
So we can look into that, Mr. Gruder, and be back here August 19 with an update for you?
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah. I just, you know, like I said, a two-year anniversary. I thought we'd be done by now. So I will be back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there's no other public in the board room. Let me look online. And there's no one online, so we'll jump right into our approval of minutes, as absent any proclamations or recognitions this evening. I would ask first if the board has any revisions or amendments to the regular meeting minutes of July 22, 2024.
No.
Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of July 22, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We have no appointments or resignations this evening, so we can jump right into discussion items. The first of which will be a presentation on the Tenhampton Road construction proposal. To speak to this this evening, we have the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Greg Beeson, and also on Zoom, we have our Planning Director, Dave Sharples. Good evening to both of you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know last meeting you had asked for a progress report, and Melissa gave you a quick synopsis, but we are finally moving forward with the Tenhampton Road construction and renovation. We had been delayed slightly with design conflicts with the architect. We mutually split ways. And then finally, we put out a RFQ for a construction manager to complete the renovation and the design work. So on, sorry, let me just, so we issued on June 18 an RFQ and put it on all the requirements for CDFAs. And Nancy, excuse me, I always forget what this, CDFA is the...
Community...
Development Finance Authority.
Thank you, Russ.
You're welcome.
And there are certain requirements, DOT and everything. We were excited to get four responses, so we interviewed all four. Hampshire Development Corp., Landmark Structures Corp., Fulcrum Associates, Inc., and Marquini Northern, where the companies have submitted qualified. We then conducted interviews with myself, Melissa Roy, Dave Sharples, who helped write the RFQ, Doug Eastman, Dave Tovey, Caroline Neal, and Mike Whistler from the Rec Advisory Board, our experienced construction project manager. We held them on July 17 and 18, and the committee overwhelmingly selected Hampshire Development Corp. to be the construction manager. All four firms are very qualified. We're very happy to get such qualified people. And some of the reasons why we picked HDC was due to several factors, such as working on historic buildings. Obviously, we're familiar with their work in downtown Exeter and throughout the municipality. They've also built the Hampton Falls Library and the East Kingston Police Station, and their offices are located here. I am working with...
Does that mean in Exeter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Here in Exeter, thank you, sorry. I'm working with Primex and the Mitchell Group to finalize contract to get to Russ. And one of the things that really stood out for us for HDC was their real commitment to making this a real community project, coming in under budget. So we're going to operate under a guaranteed max price of $920,840, and their construction management fee will consist of eight percent, cost of work, eight percent overhead, and then seven percent profit. So that's where we stand now. So, excuse me, looking for a motion to further sign a contract with HDC.
Dave, I didn't know. Do you have anything you wanted to add, or did Greg sum it up?
He summed it up perfectly, unanimously supported the HDC to conduct the work for us. And just, I don't know, I didn't hear Greg maybe mention, it's a design-build contract, so they'll be taking the schematic designs that we got and running with them and getting it built.
Great, thank you.
I just heard something.
We're getting him in stereo.
Yeah, we may need help. See, that's what happens when I touch someone.
Can you mute this one?
That's what we need to do.
Oh, through the laptop.
I touched something.
Our mics are too.
I did. Thank you. Sorry about that, Dave. There was a thing that flashed up that said, "Turn up the volume," and I figured I might as well. That's what happens when I touch it.
Doing your tolls and see what happens.
So, are there any questions for either Greg or Dave from the board? No? Okay. Then, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize the Town Manager or their designate to negotiate and execute a contract with Hampshire Development Corporation to be the construction manager to complete the Tenhampton Road Multi-Generational Community Center project.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. I'll stick around.
Okay. Next, Mr. Sharples will continue with us, and I will not hit anything else, no other buttons. Dave, we can hear you fine, as you review with us the Public Safety Police Department Fire Department Substation Architect Proposal.
Thank you. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm excited to bring this forward to you today. I wrote the, I'll summarize my memorandum that I wrote to Russell Dean last week, that we issued the enclosed request for qualifications for design services back in May for the new police station fire substation. We ended up receiving six responses by the deadline, and we decided to interview four of the firms. We assembled an interview panel that consisted of the Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy, Police Chief Stefan Poole, Deputy Police Chief Josh McCain, Fire Chief Justin Pizon, the Building Inspector Doug Eastman, the Finance Director Corey Stevens, David Hurley from CHA, who is our Owners Project Manager, Joe Sullivan from CHA, and myself. So quite a panel, well-represented, a lot of knowledgeable folks. And we held the interviews on June 16 and the 22. We met after the last interview on the 22, and again, subsequent to that, well, we met on July 19 after the first one, then we met after the meeting on the 22, and then we finalized on July 29 as a group to kind of go over the selection process. We had reviewed all four firms and utilized scoring criteria to aid us in the selection process. We also evaluated each firm's fee proposal. And after a thorough discussion amongst the panel, we are proposing that the town engage the services of TGAS, which is Ted Galante Architectural Services, for a price of $1.2 million. And while their fee proposal was initially the highest, we negotiated with Ted Galante from TGAS to further define the scope and fee that resulted in the reduction. And I have enclosed a July 26, 2024 letter from Ted describing the services that are included for the $1.2 million. I also enclosed the proposed contract from TGAS, and we are currently in the process of reviewing the contract with council and CHA, and expect to finalize the language after the meeting, should the Select Board accept the panel's recommendation. I did provide a suggested motion for your consideration, but I did make a mistake in it when I go down the bottom and it says, "Request for Proposals for Owner Project Management Services." It's manager services, it's actually supposed to be design services. So I apologize for that, but if someone makes a motion, just replace owner project manager with design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharples. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
No, it's quite an extensive interview committee, so I feel very confident in their choice.
Agreed. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the Select Board authorize the Town Manager to negotiate and execute a contract with TGAS for the scope of work set forth in the Request for Proposals for Design Services, Town of Exeter New Police Station and Fire Substation dated April 12, 2024, for a price not to exceed $1,200,000.
Can I, before I second, could I ask for one moment to add or designate Exeter Town Manager?
I, yes, I will amend my motion as such to Town Manager or designate.
And I'll second?
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sharples.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night, John.
See you Thursday.
Next on our agenda, we have our Finance Director, Corey Stevens, to present the Public Safety Bond Anticipation Notice. Good evening, Mr. Stevens.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I will dovetail on Mr. Sharples' presentation, and I'm before you this evening to discuss our short-term borrowing strategy, or Phase 1, if you will, for the police station fire substation. The executive team of myself, Mr. Dean, and Ms. Roy are recommending that we start with a one-year bond anticipation note for $3.5 million that will take us through July of next year, at which time we will bond the full project for the $17.5 million. We wanted to just take out what we needed this year to get us through the design phase, the engineering, and then somewhat into the construction, with the hope that perhaps over the next year, interest rates will continue to fall, and when we go to actually borrow the full $17.5 million, it may be a more favorable rate. So that's been our strategy. We put out a request for bid proposals in July through the bond bank and got just two proposals, both of which were competitive with each other. We have a relationship with the bank that I'm recommending we go with, which is TD Bank. And their terms are $3.5 million at 4.89% maturing in one year from next week. That is my recommendation. In order to keep the process moving, we're hoping to close next week, if you all are in favor. I had bond counsel put together closing documents for us, which are before you this evening. So this evening, I'm looking for two things, a motion to formally accept the TD Bank proposal, and then a vote on the resolution of Governing Board authorizing the Town Administrator to move forward with issuance of the ban.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Stevens? Corey, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No.
You need two motions?
Yes.
Okay. And the second one has quite a bit of...
It does. I talked with bond counsel, and they prefer to have us walk through the...
That's fine. No, I agree. I think that's right. Okay. Before I go, Selectmen Gilman, do you have any...
No, I did not.
Okay. I would first entertain a motion to approve the terms of TD Bank financing proposal dated July 19, 2024, for a $3.5 million general obligation bond anticipation note for the police station fire substation.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'll ask that you bear with me in entertaining a second motion, which would be to adopt the votes of the Resolution of Governing Board as follows. Voted to authorize the issuance of a $3.5 million general obligation bond anticipation note of the issuer, which was heretofore authorized by the issuer on March 12, 2024, such note to be dated August 15, 2024. Voted to sell said note to the purchaser with the principal amounts, maturities, premium if any, redemption provisions if any, and interest rates specified on Schedule A attached heretofore and made a part hereof. Voted to issue the note and substantially the form set forth in Schedule B attached heretofore and made a part hereof. Voted to authorize at least a majority of the governing body and the treasurer to sign the note, or to have said signatures printed electronically, or in fact, similarly on the note, and to affix the issuer's seal thereto. Voted to authorize the treasurer to deliver the note to the purchaser against payment, therefore. Voted to authorize at least a majority of the governing board and the treasurer to execute and deliver a signature and no litigation certificate with receipt, a no arbitrage and tax certificate, an IRS Form 8038-G, and substantially the form presented to this meeting, and such other documents as may be necessary or appropriate, to accomplish the sale and delivery of the note in accordance with the foregoing, and voted to authorize TD Bank and A to serve as paying agent with respect to the note. So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, maybe for the Finance Director, which is, it says in the outline of this resolution, the following roll call votes. Is there an expectation that this vote would be roll call, Corey? Do you know?
Not necessarily. I think if the board agrees to our votes favorably on the overall, that is fine.
It's good. Okay. Thanks.
Do you prefer me to do a roll call?
You know me, Mr. Chair. When I see roll call, I say, "Let's do a roll call."
Roll call?
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Aye.
Selectman Chartrand?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
The chair says aye, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. And just a quick note, you know, the group that's been vetting the Public Safety Complice can't say enough about them, and also, Mr. Sharples' sort of guidance thus far has been instrumental in getting us to where we are. So I appreciate working with the group, and particularly Dave on this project so far.
Thank you very much for that. And having sat in on one or two meetings, I would concur with that, wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Good evening.
May I ask a favor?
Yeah.
Would you give this to the Recording Secretary, Ms. Bartel?
Thank you.
Okay, for our last discussion item, I am going to hand it over to Selectwoman Gilman, who is going to continue our discussion on the 250th Celebration Commission Charge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we noted last week, I thought I had put this in, submitted this for the packet at the last meeting, but here it is now. I'm going to read it out so the general public can hear what is proposed. 2026 will mark the United States' sister centennial anniversary of its independence. Exeter's 250th Celebration Commission is established and tasked with organizing, arranging, and coordinating thematic tributes to the American Revolution, the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, and the founding of the Great Experiment of Democracy. The commission shall consist of six residents and a member of the Exeter Heritage Commission as voting members. The terms of their membership shall expire December 31, 2026. A Select Board Member, library representative, and Parks and Recreation Department representative shall participate as non-voting members. The commission shall consult and coordinate with the State of New Hampshire's American Revolutionary Sister Centennial Commission, established under RSA 17-S, town departments, area businesses, nonprofit organizations, and neighboring towns to ensure that the Town of Exeter site events under its established tasks, and that's site with an S. The commission shall identify and pursue resources necessary to be appropriated in the town's 2026 budget. These costs may include grant opportunities, associated matching funds, free and volunteer services, and monetary donations accepted by the Select Board.
Terrific.
So that was my recommendation. I will say, I tried to get in touch or read the reports from the State Commission, and there are none. So I don't know how active that commission is. I have reached out to a couple of the members to see what's happening there. But the idea here was to have this group gather activities for all ages, from all parts or pieces of residents and businesses, and anyone that wants to participate. And I put in the other towns also because at that time, Exeter consisted of the area of Exeter-Brentwood, Fremont, Epping, New Fields, New Market, Kensington. I think that's it. Maybe Kingston.
So this commission would work on budget recommendations for, not the budget we're working on now, but the following year?
Because the money would be spent in 2026, right? So we do want to identify what we're going to need before that. So we have a year to figure that out.
So they'd have essentially, whenever we can recruit six folks between now and June of '25, to basically come up with some budget numbers for Mr. Dean and his team?
Yeah. And also, I didn't put it in here expressly, but my idea is for this group... but my idea is for this group is to not just celebrate July 4, but to have something thematic. That's why I use the word thematic throughout the year, so that we just, you know, keep it going. Keep the idea going.
I like the idea. Thoughts? Questions?
It looks good to me. Yeah.
So we'll begin recruiting for this?
We have to.
Adopt.
Once adopted.
Hold on, we're getting there.
Yeah, sorry. The only question I have is, you don't think that we'd want to put some seed money in there for pre-planning and having to pay for things upfront? Or at least put deposits down?
That's a good point. Considering everybody's going to be vying for money in 2026 to do just the same things. I had considered, and this is what happened with the state commission also, was establishing a fund that would lapse at the end of 2026 or in 2027 if we had to pay bills later. So we might add that to this. And I can bring it back. But I have no idea how much to ask for.
Yeah, it'd be something that, I don't know.
I know.
I've never been involved in planning something like this, but I think a little seed money would probably be not a bad idea.
I think you're right, because there are going to be like reenactors or spaces or something that we're going to want to use or identify anyway.
Yeah, and I think to reserve them, we have to put a down payment, a deposit.
Yeah.
Do we want to go with six committee members? An even number, or do we want to?
Well, six committee individuals and a heritage commission member as voting commissioner.
Okay, so seven.
That would be seven.
Yeah. Isn't that enough?
I'm wondering if it's too...
Too many?
Try to recruit folks for...
True.
We can always bring it back. I mean, if we're having a hard time.
Well, we'll bring it back in two weeks anyway. Maybe we'll hear from people that it's too big or too small. And I'll try to work with Mr. Dean to figure out how much money we can ask for just for, as Selectwoman Belanger mentioned, the anticipation of spending. An anticipation of spending.
So would your preference be to not take action tonight?
Yes.
For two weeks?
We can start recruiting, yeah.
Mr. Dean, with budget ideas? And then we can bring it back on the 19th for a formal adoption? Okay. That work for the rest of the board?
Yeah, I'm very inclined to support this.
Me too.
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah, great job.
Thanks.
So, Mr. Dean, we'll put this back on for the 19th?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Just a little disappointed at the state.
Well, maybe in the next two weeks, find something.
Okay, so diving into regular business. We do not have any abatements, credits, or exemptions this evening, nor do we have any permits or approvals. Mr. Dean, I think you had a brief town manager's report for us?
I do. To just recapture, the valuation letters have gone out. So people wishing to make an appointment on their valuations can contact MRI. You can sign up on the town website and call 603-279-0352, extension 404, to request an informal assessment review hearing. So.
Okay.
Then Kingston Road has been striped and completed.
Nice.
Nice.
Good news there. The groundwater mobilization was today, and the drilling is to start next week.
Good.
So.
Excellent.
And Fire Truck Engine 5 push-in ceremony was August 29. And that went well. And Finance is finishing the CIP debt schedules.
Okay.
And also, National Night Out is tomorrow night, August 6, from 4 to 7 at Townhouse Common.
Looking forward to that.
Should be a good night.
Always a fun event, and...
So I wear my bathing suit.
Are you doing your dunk tank, then?
I know I've been asked to come in a bathing suit. I don't know about you.
My back is not in shape.
Your back is not in shape, which means I bring two bathing suits. You know, that is such a good time. And due to the siphons last year, they had to move it to Townhouse Common. And I know Chief was a little concerned about, you know, how that would work out, but it worked out wonderfully. And the way that it flows and how folks can enter and exit and park, I just thought it was, it just seemed, folks were a lot more together than, you know, out at Swayze Parkway. And it was a good time. It was a good time. The weather was great. And I know we, Selectwoman Chartrand and I, took turns in the dunk tank, which was refreshing until the sun comes around and is blocked by the trees. And I know you and I got pretty cold pretty quick.
Ninja Blake's Hotel blocked the sun.
If Public Works was paying attention that evening, they saw an extra-long hot shower. But it's a good time, it's a good night, and hopefully it's well-attended tomorrow. Because, and I know Chief Poole and Detective Page and everybody just put so much into it. And we'll look forward to that.
Great.
So.
Detective Page has twisted my arm for like three years in a row. And so I promised this year I will join you in the dunk tank.
Okay, all right. Bring a towel.
Bring a bathrobe.
Bring it all.
Depending on how hot it is.
Thanks for summing in for me. Appreciate it.
Mr. Dean, one quick thing. I'm going to, while we have you here on Town Manager's Report, I'm going to jump into one piece of correspondence that we had.
Sure.
And that was regarding elderly exemption. And I had a back-and-forth with Mr. Clement on this. And just wanted to confirm with folks at home that are seeing this in the packet, that any adoption of revising the exemption would need to go on the town warrant.
That's correct.
So having said that, I know that you have a committee that you formed, that you're trying to recruit folks and understanding that at present day, there may be a lot of people interested in that committee. But not to get burned by death by committee. I'd also like to run parallel with the board and your team, the executive team. I'd really like to have you bring something to the board for us to consider, maybe putting something on the warrant. So if we can have that discussion between now and the end of the year to just look at the figures and whatnot, you know, in conjunction with the... I mean, I know the committee will probably work at this as well, but I think it's important enough to folks that we consider putting this on as a warrant article in March.
Yeah, and we have the bandwidth to do that. So we can certainly take that up.
I do have a...
Go ahead.
Am I okay? The Veterans Credit is a little different, right? Because I know a few years ago, we, I think we're at 500, we did talk about increasing it again. And some towns are at 750, so if that's... I just can't remember if it's a warrant or if the board does that. So if we could consider adding that.
Let's look at it all. Let's look at it all.
Yeah, all the exemptions and credits and...
Yeah, I couldn't remember, and I didn't look up the RSI's and stuff. So anyway.
And I think it's still important to go forward with the committee for long term, but I think it's important enough to folks this year that we at least give it a look and if it makes sense to put it on the warrant. Selectwoman Chartrand, I'm sorry.
No, no worries. I would like that committee to also look at how we verify the information that our taxpayers provide to us. Because I think it has not been that sharp in the past.
Okay.
We've kind of taken their word for it. And we're talking about shifting obligations for taxes from one group to another. And there may be a good reason to do that, but that should be verified. It shouldn't just be on someone's say-so. So I'd like your group to look at that. And I'll be looking at that when it comes back to the select board.
Yep, we can do that as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Mr. Dean, did you have anything else? I think that was your...
Pretty much it. I just also wanted to note that Heather Shay started her, was here today for her first day as our GIS coordinator.
Oh, terrific.
So it was very exciting.
Good.
To have her in and meet her, and we wish her the best. She'll do a great job for us.
Wish her the best, and she was well worth the wait.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very much so.
Appreciate the report.
You're welcome.
Select Board Committee reports. We'll start with you, Selectwoman Belanger.
So the Arts Committee was canceled because of no quorum. Recreation Advisory was canceled for a lack of quorum. I tried to reschedule a few times. I did attend the Budget Recommendation Committee kickoff with all of us, for the most part. And I just want to take a moment to thank our chair and Mr. Stevens. Our town manager and our assistant town manager, for different reasons, were not able to attend. And you two filling in, I thought went really well. You represented things really well. Not the dumb surprise, but I just did want to take a moment to thank you for the work that went into that night. And just to remind everybody, budget season has kicked off. So the next part of this process is Thursday night. Planning Board, 7 o'clock. We have our first capital improvement plan meeting. So tune in, come. Our chair would love to have public comment, so please come. And...
And they can see the document on the planning board?
It's in the packet, though.
On the webpage for the planning board?
It is. Though I just want to give people a heads up that it's a little tough to read. It's, the font is very tiny right now. And some of it's really light. So don't waste your printer. If you print things out, you might want to wait. And we're going to see if we can get a clearer version of that available. But CIP, Thursday night, 7 o'clock.
Thank you for looking into that. Getting the different print. Perfect, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
I had no meetings. I just wanted to, what are coming up is the Heritage Commission is meeting on next Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. And we'll be looking at the progress report for the Pine Street area survey, Stork survey, that we had been granted $20,000 to do. And so I look forward to seeing that. And we're going to project it on the screen so everyone can see the kind of work we do.
Good, excellent, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
I have nothing.
Okay. Selectwoman Chartrand?
I had no meetings over the last two weeks. I do have a Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, terrific, thank you. I did not have any meetings other than the budget meeting. And it was a privilege for me to sit with you and talk budget. And thank you again for your kind words for Cory and for me. Very exciting group, the Budget Recommendations Committee. We have a lot of folks returning, and we have some newcomers who were not shy about jumping right in to participate, which is absolutely wonderful. So I am envisioning a very thorough and robust review of the budget this year. It'll be very exciting. So again, thank you to all of those that are returning to the BRC and those newcomers that volunteered.
Congratulations to Mr. Kelly. He's chair again.
Mr. Kelly's chair and Chris Suter, vice chair again. And the draft budget will be presented to the select board September 30 at our meeting, and then October 2 to the BRC at their meeting. So, Mr. Dean, we did, just to remind, and I know Melissa knows this as well, with the late start to the budget season, we have told Anna Grazer, who is the chair of the General Government Subcommittee, that she'll be able to begin her work in September.
Oh, okay.
She's going to need that extra time. So if you and Melissa and Cory work to help her out, that'd be great.
She's on vacation, so she really has a short window of time there.
I'll make a note of that, thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me. Okay, correspondence. We have a butters notice from the New Fields Planning Board. This is also on the same night as the Town of Exeter Planning Board. They are going to be discussing and reviewing the subdivision design on the Derrick Rug Trust Map 2005 Lot 2 and Exeter Tax Map 10 Lots 1 through 7, Map 11 Lot 11. Mr. Dean and Ms. Roy and I discussed this. Obviously, Mr. Sharples is going to be at our Exeter Planning Board, but we are going to make sure that we have a representative from the Town of Exeter there. And, Mr. Dean, we're working on that. I don't know where you're at with that, but...
Yes, calls been put in.
Okay. But we will have representation there. Talked about Mr. Clement's email. We have New Hampshire DOT notice regarding the Exeter Highway Block Grant Aid. And the total for FY '25 is $320,328.69. And last but not least, Selectwoman Belanger, I'll let you take this one.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize the Parks and Rec. It was National Parks and Rec Month last month. And I meant to bring it up during my report, and I totally forgot about it, my apologies. But I just want to give a shout out to, what Parks and Rec does is extraordinary, as far as I'm concerned, and not just because I'm assigned to them. Age groups, all age groups, very community-oriented. It's just incredible work. So I think they make us proud. I think I can speak for myself at least and say that. And the hard work, oh my gosh. Carolyn, all of them, Dave Tovey, Greg, of course. There are others. I don't have everyone's name. But just, I just want to take a moment to appreciate our Parks and Rec and all the work that they do for our community.
Indeed. And, you know, what David, we've celebrated his efforts here throughout the year in the NOVAC room, what he's done with our seniors and the trips that he plans with them, some of the different initiatives he does. It's just wonderful how he's working towards increasing the senior programming. And as we come, I know we have another month or so of summer left, but summer camp ends at the end of this week. And again, just to shout out to not only Greg, Dave, and Carolyn, but all of the counselors, the lifeguards, these people that have been working with our kids, literally hundreds of kids every day. The field trips that they plan are amazing. You know, everything is, you know, relative to the age group. And, you know, I drive by there every once in a while, and the fields are packed. I know the camp has been packed. They filled every spot. And it's just great to see all of our kids smiling, having fun, enjoying summer. It's great to see the counselors smiling, having fun. And there's not a morning that goes by where Mr. Bisson and Mr. Tovey are not there, greeting parents, making sure everything's working. So the work that they do in addition to their regular work during the summer, it just can't be said enough. So thank you for bringing that up.
And they have a help seat in there, too. Push for help seat there. But they also, when they're planning their events and their trips, they're finding ways to make them at least pay for themselves. So they have the whole thing going here, right? So I'm just really, really proud of the work they do. And the Recreation Advisory Board also. They are very much into the details and things. So I'm glad I was assigned to them because I really got to be a little bit more, pay a little bit more attention to the board. to the board, so thank you, Mr. Chair, for putting that in there.
Of course, and it's exciting that Tenhampton Road is taking that next step, because I think once that is rehabilitated, and they're able to move in, and then they can add additional programming, and I liked what was in the motion, is that it's going to be a multi-generational community center, which was one of the things I was so passionate about six years ago, so we're getting there. So good work, thank you, Selectwoman Belanger. Okay, so one of the toughest things we're going to have to work out this evening is reviewing the board calendar, so I'm going to ask everyone to have their phones out or calendars.
Mr. Chair, before, before we begin that, can I do a PSA that I forgot to do?
Please, of course.
As I spoke of at the last meeting, our Energy Committee has entered into the Green Challenge with Portsmouth, New Market, Dover, and I think that's it, to have the most people opt out on their choice of their level of green energy that's used through their electricity choices. You can go on the town, the town's Energy Committee website to find the link to change the, your choice. Everybody's given the default rate, which is lower than unitiles by 2 cents, I think, but you can opt out, opt up to have a mix of renewable energy in the power that you receive at your home. You're not directly getting, you know, somebody's solar power to your home, but it is being generated, so that less gas is being used to generate the electricity from our providers. So we have this challenge, we'd like, there's no cost, no, it's all private, your name will not be used, your account number won't be used, it's just did you opt up? And there are three other levels besides the default one. One is a 30% green energy use, one is 50%, and one is 100%. And so we're joined these other towns to have a challenge, and I really like to have Exeter be the number one for people that want to become more green, but like at my house, I don't have the space or the right orientation for my house to put up solar panels, but if I choose to go green and opt up onto my choice, then that's my part of decreasing the carbon footprint for the town's use of electricity. So that's what, that's, that's the advantage of opting up, is if you can't participate physically, and, you know, go ahead and help us out by your, through your bill, I guess.
Well, thank you for the PSA, and I too hope that Exeter can, it's not a contest, but win the challenge, or...
Yeah, be able to.
Show the lead, take the lead.
Take the lead, yeah.
Set the example. Great, thank you. Okay, do we have our calendars out? So we are scheduled already for August 19th, September 2nd, which is a Tuesday, September 16th.
September 3rd is a Tuesday.
I beg your pardon, September 3rd, yep. I was thinking of my daughter's birthday. August 19th, September 3rd, September 16th, and September 30th.
All on my calendar.
Okay, so going into, through November, we have several holidays and other things to navigate through, so I sat down with Mr. Dean, we are proposing October 15th, which is a Tuesday, and we will find room for the ZBA, who's also meeting that evening. October 28th, November 5th.
That's the election day.
Oh, that's right.
Who?
No, that was actually, that was, Mr. Dean and I...
Oops.
We did an oops, because I had, I had November 12th, which is a Tuesday, let's stick with that.
It would be November 12th, yeah.
All right, Russ, we'll have to...
All right.
And then we'll go back-to-back, because of Thanksgiving, we'll do November 18th.
So November 12th also is BRC, and...
Yes.
Just an FYI.
I mean, we'd, yeah, we have to...
I'm just throwing it out there, I have it on my calendar.
Okay, so you said the 12th, and then the 25th, or the 18th?
The 18th. It's, it's just, it becomes difficult to get a packet together for the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
So I understand the BRC is, which, which night is that? What's their...
The 19th.
No, no, I understand.
The BRC is the 12th.
What are they, what are they discussing that night?
I can tell, GPW, Water and Sewer. And Cory confirmed it. You're as bad as me putting all these in there.
Mr. Dean, could they possibly do that one? Wheelwright Room's too small, could they, could they do that in the library? What time's the library room?
The library room would fit the BRC.
So they started at 6:30?
Yes.
Because Water and Sewer's usually not that.
We'd have to check with the library to see if the room's free, but...
Let's, let's do that.
That's, that's an option.
And Senior Center and Parks and Rec Room.
Yep, the Senior Center.
Senior Center.
But can it be televised?
We can make accommodations with the XTV to at least record it.
So let's tentatively plan for November the 12th and the 18th, and let's work out the BRC. And I understand we all like to go to the BRC meetings, but looking at the other alternatives in November, it's going to be tough.
As long as we don't have anybody on the, on the agenda that needs to be there, we'll be all set, right?
We can work that out easily.
That's what I mean, we'll be all set, we don't have to worry about it.
We'll work that out. So let me run through these again, August 19th, September 3rd, September 16th, September 30th, October 15th, October 28th, October 12th, I mean, November 12th, rather, and November 18th.
And the 3rd of September, the 12th of November are Tuesdays, right?
Yes.
As well as...
And the 15th, correct.
Those are due to holidays? And it's funny, thank you for saying that, because I knew today, when I wrote down the 12th, it was for a reason, and then we're sitting in his office, and I completely forgot about the election. That would not be a good idea.
There you go.
All right, so we're going to do...
I could use the distraction, but, right, no.
The 12th and the 18th, so we're going to do two weeks in a row.
Yep. And, and the other reason behind that, too, just to explain, is that we already have three in September, so to do it back-to-back into October, it's just, there's too much at one time, we'd like to keep it spaced out as much as we can, so... Mr. Dean, the only thing I can think of is maybe, where it's so far out, could we possibly ask the BRC to reschedule that meeting?
We could. I have a meeting tomorrow with Mr. Kelly regarding CIP, so I could bring it up with him tomorrow, we can have that conversation.
I'd actually try for that first.
Yeah.
If they can move that to another night.
Yeah, they may be able to do that.
Right, because we haven't, they don't even have the budget yet, so...
Right.
Okay.
So let me check with him and see what I can, see what we can come up with.
So I'd ask the board, keep the November dates as stated, and then on the 19th, we'll confirm. And if we really feel ambitious, we could try to get through December at that time.
Okay, that would be good.
It would be good. I'm still working on potential times and agendas for all boards, but I would think that's going to be later in the fall. We've got a lot going on in the next couple of months. Any other business from the board this evening?
Just to five may add one more thing.
Please.
And to wish our town manager a happy birthday this coming Sunday, since we don't have a meeting. You don't have to say it whole.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Dean.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy.
And I have a quick point, I'd just like to thank Melissa and Cory for all their great work while I was out on leave, I really appreciate their...
Absolutely.
Their guidance, and obviously, they did a great job, and they're backing me up, and I appreciate it.
Yep, no, they did, did a fantastic job, and we're happy to have you back. If there's no other business, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to go into non-public under 91A32C?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
And the clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passed as 5-0, board will be moving into non-public, thank you.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16, and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.